Well, good morning. It's 10 o'clock and welcome to the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, September the 13th Work Session Meeting. At this time I'll call this meeting to order. And again, thank you all for being here and participating. Brian, to go bring forward the citizens wishing to speak on the agenda items. Just a heads up, I leave my phone on too often during these. Thanks, sir. And we are honored to have with us this morning Pastor Ron Cooper from The Rock Church. And he's going to bring us our indication and lead us into place to the flag stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for this day. We ask your blessings upon this work session today, that you give us solutions to our problems, that you give us wisdom to deal with them. Lord, I pray that it's a very productive day. For, Lord, we know that today is the day that you have made. And we rejoice and be glad in it, that it's not just a common day, but it's a day that you've made. Lord, we give you thanks for all things, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank Pastor Cooper so much for being here. We appreciate it. I'd like to announce that Commissioner Ron Davis is in Blairsville, Georgia this morning, getting ACCG leadership training. So, that's why I'm here. Under minutes, the August 28th, 2018 work session minutes and the August 28th, 2018 board meeting minutes are available for review. Under positively timed this morning, we have the commemoration of the, just a few days ago, the 17th Annual 9-1-1 Memorial Ceremony that took place, or one of the places that it took place, was Mount Tabor Park. So, that's what we're going to show you this morning.
The 9/11 ceremony went good this year, as it only does. It's led by our Honor Guard for Pauling County Fire and Pauling County Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Grabett with the Sheriff's Office led the way this year. We've been doing this for approximately 12 years now, and we do it every year. Rain or shine, we did. Last year, we missed last year due to hurricane weather. That was the first year that we'd missed in quite some time. We enjoyed the public coming out and supporting us, the firemen, the police officers, the retired Shields of New York City, and the airlines had representation with us today. And it was a great event for the community and to remember our fathers, brothers and sisters, and our young men and women there continuing to fight to keep our country safe and to keep us all free. And we've had a blast more.
May we never, ever forget, and we've got Colonel Hutton and Deputy Stroley here with us. So, they're going to talk with us later in closed session. Brian Acker, our Human Resources Director, again to come forward, is going to announce our Pauling County Award from the Health Promotion and Wellbeing Grant from ACCG. The group, through the group Health Bureau, it's programmed. Please, Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I won't even pretend to take credit when Chairman Carmichael saw this. He sent me an email and said, "I hold you responsible for this." I'm not going to let you do that. I am going to hold responsible. Come on up, Ashley Gulick from my office. She's our Wellness Champion. And also Karen Palmer helps her manage and coordinate this. They can tell you a little bit about what we've done, but we basically have applied for a $6,000 grant with ACCG. We've received it. And bottom line is it lets us do some basic health promotion wellness things. They'll tell you about some of those activities, but again, they deserve the credit. Not me, thank you, but I want to make sure they get the credit and let them tell you a little bit about it.
Yes, the $6,000 grant, we use it for health and wellness activities for employees. We do wellness, walking challenges, lunch and learns, cooking demos. So, we're excited to have this again. We appreciate the support, and we really can't wait to see what all we can do this year, even with a little bit more money. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Under invited guests, we have none this morning. Dinner awards, none this morning. Under reports from committees and departments, we're happy to have an update from Ms. Anne Lippman, the Community Development Director, to give us an update on building permits and business licenses.
Thank you all for having me at the beginning of each month to talk about what's going on in community development, specifically building permits and business licenses. As you can see, permits went up in August. For the year, we have had 4,261 permits issued. The breakdown between single-family detached and non-residential, we've had 1,121 single-family detached and attached permits and 127 commercial permits. You'll see the number, the value for the August non-residential permits is high, and that is due to the jail. So, that was a $600 million, or $60 million value that was permitted in Pauling County. And each month, I want to kind of bring a new twist to what's going on with the permits. And last month, I had a call from a person interested in locating, I believe it was a church in northeast Pauling County. He wanted to know what the growth rate was since 2010. So, since I tracked the data and you can sort of project, the average household size in Pauling County is 2.99. So, if you look at it broken down by post, as I always point out, that post four seems to win the building permit number each year. But if you break that down by the projected growth, I verified with Skipper, in 2010, each post roughly had 35,000 people. So, if you take the permits and project out that growth based on 2.99 people, you can see that each of the four posts has grown. But post one has grown by 11 percent, post two by 4.3, post three by 6.73 percent, and post four by 33 percent. This graph just shows that growth, so I thought that would be a little interesting. And I roughly estimate the population to be about 160,000 people. So, it'll be interesting to see after 2020 how much that grows even more. As far as business licenses, this is kind of the slower time of the year. They did have 66 new business licenses issued in August, bringing us to a total of 3,095. And the breakdown between home occupations and commercial is 842 commercial occupations and 2,253 home occupations. I'll be happy to answer any questions. If anybody has a special number they'd like me to research for next time, I'll be happy to do that.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
Under public participation of agenda items, Ms. Lynn Backlin is going to come forward and talk about new business number two.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'll be brief. New business item number two, we're entering into an agreement with the city of Dallas in Pauling County. But back in the end of July, we were informed on the new jail that the tax fees for sewage were going up $500,000 over what was originally budgeted. Chairman Carmichael, I emailed you numerous times about it. We never got a response. I find that city of Dallas is wagging the dog. Their little tail is making the county jump. They should be held accountable for those horrendous tax fees. Sewage fees is one thing, but the tap into their sewer for a fee of $800,000 is absolutely horrendous. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to correct that I did respond first to email, and I have that on my computer.
Please forward it again, because I never received the response.
Okay. Under consent agenda, discuss action on three consent agenda items. Number one is to authorize the chairman to sign a utility easement with Carroll Electric Membership Corporation, the agency, for system upgrades at Mulberry Rock Park adjacent to Mulberry Rock Road. Number two is Pauling County Sheriff's Office requests to officially retire K-9 Major from his police K-9 duties and become surplus property of the county. If granted, K-9 Major will live out the rest of his days with his current handler, Lieutenant Billy Hurst. You can come up if you'd like to. Only consent agenda items, we don't require any explanation unless one of the Commissioners requests.
I'll just go give you all some stats.
Number three is to authorize the chairman to sign and submit the annual Association County Commissioners of Georgia ACCG Safety Discount Verification Forms. Would any Commissioners like to bring any of these three items up to regular session, to regular part of the agenda?
I wouldn't mind hearing from Mr. Hatt.
Colonel Hatt, go forward and give us the information that you have. It'd be greatly appreciated.
Where's your hat? Well, my mama says not to wear many doors, so.
She's trapped.
I like keeping the horse out there. Um, I appreciate the opportunity. The K-9 Major, he started with us in 2009, September of 2009. So, this month will be his ninth year with us. His breed is a Belgian Malinois. He's 10 and 1/2 years old, and he was imported from Slovakia. He's a dual-purpose K-9, which is drug detection and patrol work. So, he's, Lieutenant Hurst, he was his partner for nine years. And it's, it was a tough decision for Lieutenant Hurst. As you can imagine, I've never been a K-9 handler, but I've had a couple partners that I rode shotgun with, and you know, when they departed, they left us. They went to other things and whatnot, but it was a part of me left with them. So, I can't imagine that K-9 being in that car with him every day, going home with him every day, and you know, being that partner and Lieutenant having to make this decision. But throughout his career with us, K-9 Major, he had 60, oh, I'm sorry, correction, 51 successful suspect tracks. He had 85 successful drug fines, 193 public demonstrations, and 190 total arrests as a team since 2009. So, I just wanted to share that with y'all, and if y'all afford that opportunity, Lieutenant Hurst and his wife and son, they would like to keep him, and he's part of their family. He is their family, so. But we appreciate the opportunity.
Happy to hear your question. Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Chairman.
Very much. Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Under old business, we have none. Under new business, number one is discuss action to approve the fiscal year 2018 budget amendments represented on this poll.
Good morning. This is just an annual housekeeping item. It doesn't, it goes back, this will be where we're currently in fiscal year 2019. This goes back to 2018 and incorporates everything that you've done that impacted the budget throughout the year from the time the original budget was approved in 2017. So, primarily the adjustments that are made here, every department was touched. That doesn't happen all the time, but we had salary adjustments budgeted in one line. This moves it to all the other lines. We had the lead buyback budgeted in one line. This moves it to all the departments where it was actually expensed. And it makes a transfer to complete, it makes a transfer from general fund to CIP to cover the expense for the land purchase, as we've talked about before. So, that's the gist of the bulk of these transactions. If you have any questions.
Covered most everything in our backup.
I think so.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. New business number two, discuss action to approve the agreement between the city of Dallas and Pauling County regarding sewer billing. Ms. Pollard.
Back in September of 2016, we began to combine some of the billing. What was happening in about 12 or 13 subdivisions, the customer would receive one water bill from Pauling County Water and a sewer bill from the city of Dallas. Because Pauling County provides them water, and the city of Dallas actually treats the sewer. So, this is very confusing to the citizens, because they would get, they would have to establish service at two locations. And honestly, not everybody thinks about civil when they're establishing their utilities. So, it's just a curse. So, to better serve the citizens, we combined those services. We began to build the sewer service for the city of Dallas. And we had two agreements. One was for Imitrace and one was for Saddle Brook, which authorized us to retain 10% in admin fees. We were, we were all in agreement that we were going to continue that, to provide those sewer billings based on the agreements that were in place. What we didn't understand is each of us had a different view of what was being done. So, we were billing 10%. When we billed 10%, it increased the number of customers we were billing by about 1,600. And when we incurred, when we billed those and charged 10% of the sewer fee, it was a substantial amount. It was fairly high. So, city of Dallas came back after, well, within the past three months. But it's been a continuing process of undeveloped new things that we were finding realizing on each side. About three months ago, they said, you know, this is really more than what we can, it's way more than what we were, it was costing us to bill those customers. So, we began to work on negotiations, and we have come to an agreement that we didn't want the county to incur the cost for the city of Dallas, but, and we didn't want to exceed what it was costing them. So, we worked it out, but we're both in agreement that $2.50 a bill, rather than 10% of the sewer charge, is sufficient to cover our cost, and it helps them as well. So, what it asks for in this agreement is that we go back to September of 2016, and we recalculate the bill. So, we charged 10% for the Imitrace and Saddle Brook, and $2.50 for the other 1,600. This agreement does agree to that. And we also have some information out there about the AMI, which is a service that all of us are trying to get to, where we can better re-serve the customers. And it's really a consolidation of efforts on both of our parts, so we have to serve the customers better. Any questions?
You also covered that in the backup.
I'll say something that's not in the backup. Y'all have had at least a half dozen meetings with the city of Dallas, and Ms. Pollard, and this actual Scott, Frank, have worked tremendously hard to coordinate and negotiate and just to resolve a lot of different questions with the city of Dallas. I've watched that, and it's been gratifying to see what y'all have come up with and the final plan here. But I'll leave anybody out. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three is discuss action to approve a supplemental agreement in the amount of $82,025 for Atkins North America Incorporated for construction, engineering, and inspection services for an additional $965. And standing in for Mr. George Young is our own Scott.
That's awesome. It's been a while. You might want to get your hook ready. I've been known to grab the microphone and stay a little while. If you're expecting George, I'm sorry. I know you might try to see George up here presenting on DOT, but he's not able to be here with us, kind of on short notice. So, I'll cover what I can, best I can, and answer any questions you have. The short of it is that our bridge projects are underway. It's on Dallas-Saddle Brook. As y'all know, it's been a sort of a long bridge project with a detour through there. And we are winding down the good news. I think next week, they'll be shifting traffic to the new portion of the north bridge, which is Pickett's Mill Creek. So, traffic will finally be on the new bridge at both locations on the wider portion that we put in initially. The other good news is our last 1941 77-year-old bridge will be retired at that point. And that means there's no traffic on any bridges that are 77 years old anymore in this county. We still have one last 1941 bridge, but it's the Woodbridge at the Silver Palm Trail at Willow Springs, for history's sake. So, if you want to go out and see a bridge that old, you can go out there and check it out, or ride your bike under it here maybe Saturday. It'd be great. With a little bit of length of extending the contract down out to December, we're going to need some more project management services. And we've got a contract at Atkins for the project manager at a previously agreed contract rate, and this will cover us on through the end of the year. And we need to keep the same manager we've got out there to finish everything and wrap it up. Other than that, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you have.
It'd be nice to get that done.
I'm looking forward to that. It's been an aggravation. It's nice to have a wider bridge out there to travel across, particularly if you're carrying a boat or you're meeting another car coming in the other direction. It's going to be well-received, I believe. So, thank you. And I'll stay up here for the next one.
All right. New business number four is to discuss action about Resolution 18-47, amending Chapter 62 of Pauling County Code ordinances by creating and adding Section 62.6 through Section 62.6-2.
Yes.
And amending Section 62-61 and Section 62 to 63. Updating the Pauling County Truck Route Resolution.
This is a resolution that takes, again, we found this is a pretty old ordinance, and we changed it to match what we're actually doing. This ordinance had a reference in it to primary access road, and we don't really have anything in the county that matches that. So, we have changed that definition to truck route, and we have updated the maps to show which roads in the county are truck routes. And then we have omitted any reference to that primary access road again. So, we do have new maps. If anyone wants to see those, that show which roads that are. It's the ones that you're thinking of, Baker's Bridge, Ridge Road, Philperry's, East Pauling Drive. Those kinds of roads are what's included. When this ordinance was originally written, it was written to deal with logging trucks, but the state law changed after it was written, and so we have reworked this to meet the needs that we have. Scott.
That pretty well covers it. Just a couple comments that you may be interested in. We are adding only one road. With all the time that's gone by, we're only adding one road that's built through a parkway which was built, obviously, in the last several years, and is a major road, and it's capable of carrying trucks. So, we want to include that, so trucks can avoid downtown hiring particularly. Also, we are removing 10 roads, and a lot of those roads are more residential in nature now over time and are not necessary for through truck traffic. A couple of roads I would like to point out, Cedar Crest Road. We've had quite a few calls about transfer trucks traveling through the county, altering from Highway 92 and actually taking Cedar Crest Road at different times. That's generated some calls and concerns. And we can't completely control truck traffic, but we can put up signage and direct the trucks on which way they should go, so that the heavier loads go where they belong, which is more direct to the state route. Also, Seven Hills Boulevard was on that old truck system, and that's been taken off along with several other roads that you have in your backup. This brings us overall from about 30 roads down to 20 roads that are designated truck routes. And the strategy there is we're going to sign where trucks should go if they're making through trips, rather than try to police every road where they shouldn't go, which is about 3,000 other streets in the county. So, it's a sort of a proactive way to protect truck traffic. There are penalties. If a truck is found off on one of these other roads, it's a normal traffic violation that can be pursued. We get a complaint, and an officer can pull them over that can be cited and determine where their direction is, whether it's a violation or not. Anybody making a delivery on any other road in the county that has business there, as long as they're making a relatively direct route back to the state, the state route system or the truck system in the county, is considered acceptable. That's one of the exceptions. So, I think it's a good change. It's a little bit overdue. It's not a major change, but it is necessary to comply with current law. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Scott, what about Popular Springs? I'd say it's on the list of being removed.
That is one that we have taken off.
It's not. It was one of the ones that we removed. It was only original authority. It's not down to 20.
Yeah, and you might have had an earlier list. I'm not sure if that was on the very earliest backup we sent out, but yeah, it was included. That is a connection between Macklin Road and Highway 278 that tends to be overused or abused a little bit. We've had to police that. We're officially making this change, so we can enforce that corridor and help that situation. It's still primarily a residential route. Once Macklin Road is widened in the future, it may need to change, but as it stands today, it's slowly recommended.
Would you prefer that we read the list? Because we can do that.
Does the list originally had, I believe, 13 roads that were removed?
Correct. We had the Business Park up there north of Dallas, Industrial Boulevard, Industrial Way Connector up in that area. We felt that with the amount of truck traffic and deliveries, we didn't want to be, have somebody nitpick on whether they turn left or right to go back to Dallas-Saddle since it's a loop and some connections in there. So, that would be a little bit too particular on truck traffic. So, we left those on there, and it is an industrial area. There's a lot of deliveries.
So, everything else other than the three industrial roads?
I believe that's correct.
Were planned on there as well?
Yes, sir. And y'all have the updated map, and this will be published and put on the DOT website, and also as part of the clerk's records will be available to the public. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Great report. I would like to recognize two gentlemen. I consider a special guest with Turner and our architect team, Mr. Tim Collins. And I know y'all are going to report next Thursday, but thumbs up. It's going well? Okay. Been a lot of turn out there. But also announce, and I just alluded, that to de-conflict with the school fall break at the end of the month, we are going to leave the same day, Thursday, on September the 20th, for our second October meeting. So, that is the, we don't have anyone who has signed up to speak on non-agenda items to bring forward early, so that's the conclusion of our regular business. We do have the requirement for executive session to talk about real estate and pending and potential litigation. I do maintain a motion that we go into executive session for those purposes.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for real estate, pending and potential litigation, and I would like to add personnel on there.
We have a motion going to executive session, adding personnel. We have a motion, go into executive session, adding personnel by Commissioner Poundell is their second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Colette. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Here's 4O. We stand adjourned to go into executive session. Good afternoon, we called the work session back to order, and during the executive session, we decided to add something to the agenda, and Commissioner Poundell should read that, describe it.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda to approve the purchase of real property from Jerome and Jessica Dawkins, consisting of 3.034 acres located in Land Lot 161, the third district, third section of Paulding County, for $73,000. The property is for the Paulding County Reservoir. The chairman is authorized to execute all contracts and documents necessary to complete the property purchase.
So we'll add that to the agenda here at 2 o'clock, and we think we can make that. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
We need a.
Is what I gave you.
We need a second. Can you vote on that?
Second.
Okay, we do have to vote on adding to the agenda. Now, we got a motion, Commissioner Poundell is second, Commissioner Crowe, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here's 5O, and now.
I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?
Adjourn is our second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Colette, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.